2017 regular meeting of the Seattle School Board. Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please.
Director Blandford.
Here.
Here.
Director Burke.
Here.
Director Geary.
Here.
Director Harris.
Here.
Director Petu.
Here.
Director Pinkham.
Present.
Director Peters.
Here.
If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will now turn the microphone over to Dr. Nyland and welcome Dr. Nyland for our recognitions this evening.
Yes, welcome back, everyone. We want to start tonight, thank you for our new principals and to the board for coming a little early so that we could do a little bit of a meet and greet. I'd like to introduce Mike Strosky and he's going to introduce the executive directors who'll introduce the principals who came down to say hello tonight. Appreciate that when they've got long checklists, I'm sure, of things to do as the last few days wind down here.
Good evening, Mike Strosky, Chief of Schools. Welcome back, directors officially. I would like to just take the opportunity to recognize that through many people's efforts, we have the great fortune of having a number of new leaders at Seattle Public Schools this year and overall nineteen principal changes last spring. Through efforts of HR, EDSs, we were able to do a lot of early hiring and our latest hire was in July and so that is great for us and so we have some great leaders. Not all of them could come tonight, but those who are here, we are extremely thankful because they're opening brand-new buildings, some, some are, or all of them are doing professional development. So I would like to just recognize for their efforts coming down, just for a quick opportunity to meet you and thank you for making the time. So I would like to introduce the executive directors of schools who will introduce our new principals. And the first coming to the stage is Executive Director Kim Whitworth.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's so good to be back and it's so good to see you. Our new principals have already been in their buildings and we've been out visiting and participating in the professional development and to a T, they've hit the ground running. I'm here to represent Helen Whitworth, uh Helen. Helen Whitworth Aramaki. So I am going to be talking about Helen's principles as well as my own. Helen's very disappointed that she couldn't be here today so I'm going to, I'm going to help her out with that. At Cascadia Elementary is Anna Barani. At Cedar Park Elementary is Doug Woolett. At Decatur Elementary is Rena Gohegan. At Elmerson Elementary is Erin Rasmussen. At Gatewood Elementary is Kena Williams. At Gadsert Elementary is Lori Kazangian. At Lichten Springs is Lisa Alfin. At Northgate Elementary is DeeDee Fontleroy. At Olympic Hills Elementary is Libby DeBelle. At View Ridge Elementary is Ed Russe. At Viewlands Elementary is Amy Kleiner. And the last one for me at Wedgewood Elementary is Steve Lu. Sarah Pritchett would like to introduce one of the elementary school principals.
I'm filling in for Helen. I'd like to introduce Ryan Ladaj, all the way from Minnesota, as the new principal at Blaine K-8.
Good afternoon, directors and Dr. Nyland. Sarah Pritchett and I this year now have the honor of working with our middle schools and our high schools as executive directors. We have very little change in the middle school and high school level, which is exciting. Christina Rogers, who can't be here tonight, is taking over at Roosevelt and then you'll remember from last year in an interim capacity, but now in a permanent capacity, Dr. Barbara Casey took over at the Center School. Dr. Casey. She's just a little excited. So, and beyond that, all of the other transfers and stuff were all internal people who worked with Seattle already and we're just excited to get the year rolling. We've had a lot of really good professional development today, including both Dr. D'Angelo and Dr. Freiberg up at Nathan Hale and at X-9 today with all sorts of feeder schools feeding into them, doing some great work on race and equity. So really good start to the year.
Good afternoon, Kelly Aramaki. I'm one of the three executive directors over elementary and K-8s. I'm proud to announce Jerry Guerrero as the new principal at Loyal Heights Elementary. And then lastly, we have Jessica Conti, Dr. Jessica Conti. She is the new principal at Dearborn Park International School.
So principals, this is the time you've been waiting for. We would like you to come up and we will all take a picture with our directors and superintendent. That's a requirement. Would you like the executive directors? EDSs?
So again, thanks to our principals. Hope you get off to a great start. We're pleased with a pipeline that gives opportunities to people within our system, our career mentor, star mentors and career ladder teachers and others who are interested in becoming principals and then we have a pipeline that provides support for them for their first three years in, in the job. And I forget the exact numbers, but a large majority of those that you just met have come up through our system internally and virtually all of the ones hired from outside of the system come to us with a lot of experience. So we're very fortunate to have really good leadership coming up within the system.
Thank you, Dr. Nyland. So unfortunately, we do not have any student presentations this evening, so now we will return to Superintendent Nyland for his comments.
All right. And I'll guess I'll try to be brief. It's kind of must be the start of school. I've already got six pages worth of good stuff here, so lots of good work underway. This is the time of the year when actually some of us, I get a few of those comments about, "What do you do all summer? Have you been off all summer? Where'd you go?" And hopefully each of us did get away for at least a little bit of time, but I mean, the list could go on and on and on. I mean, we've got all the people working on grounds, we've got all the work, the custodians cleaning up the buildings, we've got traffic patrol in each of our new schools trying to figure out how to get all of the new equipment in, how to get all of the phones set up, how to get all the computers set up. The list just goes on and on and they have to be reasonably coordinated with one another so that they don't trip over each other coming in and out of the building. So thank you to facilities, operations, all of the people that make good things happen. And then coming up on my remarks, there's been an awful lot of getting ready for the exciting part of instruction and so teachers, principals coming to the fore. A few of the, of the highlights. Five new schools are opening, I guess four school buildings and five schools within those buildings. We made progress this year. I don't know about other years. Last year, we opened several new schools, but several of those were replacements and so we added a little bit of capacity and we certainly took care of our maintenance backlog, but we didn't maybe add as many new seats. This year, we have 2,800 new seats and I'm pretty sure we won't grow by that many, so we're making a little bit of progress. We also added portable seats and we also went in and converted other classroom spaces, computer labs, libraries, things like that. Two-hundred-and-seventy new teachers to the district. K-5 ELA, I've lost track. I think I heard fourteen-hundred people had been trained, some of it online, some of it in person. Coming up, our try day tomorrow, our district-wide professional development. Board members are invited. We'll be here in this room at eight-thirty in the morning, but every school will have something very similar. We've trained three-hundred facilitators, I believe, to be kind of an interactive, online group process activity geared around the board goals that have been adopted by the district. So that's exciting and we really appreciate SEA Pass and our district leadership team to make that happen. Hundred new webpages from each of our schools, twenty thousand student workstations updated. So that's just a little of the work that has been done. And then kind of as a longtime Seattleite and as an old social studies history teacher, can't resist this one. A hundred-and-fifty years ago, Seattle Public Schools began taking care of their own facilities. So the beginning of Seattle Schools is a little lost in history. Catherine Blaine taught something in her living room, but not as a public school. School boards were elected somewhere in either eighteen-sixty-one or eighteen-sixty-two, those records are lost, and they did co-located and co-governance of the schools with the University of Washington until nineteen-eighteen-sixty-seven. And we've got this little quote that says, "In eighteen-sixty-seven, the school board decided that they were capable of taking over their own schools and they rented space from the county at Third and Yessler and served twenty-three students." So for a hundred-and-fifty years, we have been working really hard to find facilities and serve our students and this is a landmark year as we open more schools and prepare for more kids and certainly looking forward to those ribbon cuttings this week. So as I usually do, I'll quickly go through our SMART goals and give you a little bit of an update. Goal number one, excellence in equity and you'd think it's summer, we're not doing a lot, but fifty-seven of our schools had jumpstart, early opportunity for kindergarteners to come to school and get a head start on what the school looks like, so we don't have quite as many tiers on the first day of school. Summer staircase program, over two thousand of our students participated in summer learning, which is a really dynamic, research-based program that we'd love to tell you more about at some point soon. Three-hundred-and-fifty high school students participated in credit recovery. Two-hundred-and-twenty-five students had internship opportunities through the Skill Center and Career Connected Learning. And our Summer Leadership Institute, many of you, almost all of you were there, the board of directors, so appreciate that, coming and participating with principals as we did the launch for the start of the school year. I mentioned the K-5 ELA instructional materials adoption. Those materials are in schools just by the skin of our teeth and teachers are unpacking them and taking the online training and getting ready to roll on that. Lot of activity underway with regard to high-quality teaching, which is that first pillar in our formula for success and again, good work with SEA Pass and district leadership. So I won't take time to go through all of that, but there's quite a few pieces listed here where we're working with one another on what high-quality instruction looks like and how we do that through orientation, how we do that through the evaluation process and then how we support teachers if they need additional support. Goal two is improved systems and our budget continues to be our big challenge in that regard. So I was together yesterday with colleagues from ten other Puget Sound area school districts and we all had kind of the same story in terms of we all used ending balances to balance our budget. So we all did belt tightening and then some were doing better than others going forward, but nobody too enthralled and excited about the new state funding for schools. So our mantra, we're getting better at that, is that our taxpayers are going to pay more and they're going to get less. We probably will have budget reductions over the next four years, partly, so when The Times printed the list, we were still, I think, number one in the state in terms of the revenues that we got and the funding was pretty flat, but they're going to take money away from one pocket, they're going to launder it at the state level, they're going to give it back to us and say that they've met McLeary and we're going to be left holding the bag for the things that our taxpayers have voted for in the past and we no longer have money for. So that hence is why we'll have to be doing some belt tightening going forward. So we'll continue to work on that. They continue to say there'll be another legislative session. It'd be nice if they ended earlier than June and hopefully they'll address some of those things. We were denied our opportunity to enter an amicus brief, friend of the court, with regard to the upcoming continued ruling on McLeary, so we're part of the news lawsuit and the news lawsuit will be the primary bringer of that, whatever you call it, motion or whatever. And we have submitted our material to them and through them, but the state argued that since we were part of news, we couldn't have another bite of the apple and come in and make our own presentation. We do continue to work with the news media and we will continue to work with our partners and our parents to explain where we are. So I guess I should hasten to add, we're fine for opening school in the fall. We've done our heavy lift, we've cut our forty million dollars out of the budget. It is what it is. We've got a good program going forward. Nothing disastrous will happen in the short term. Longer term, we continue to be highly concerned about the news. Two-tier bell time, kind of old, old news, except that it's new news, so we moved the bell times a year ago and now we will move to two tiers instead of three, thanks to the support from the city of Seattle to get us started with that. And then a bunch of new systems underway and I'm sure that many of these will come with good news and a certain amount of angst as we learn new systems. So student registration, online enrollment, we're working the bugs out on that for people that don't have ready access to online enrollment. Our online payments, point-of-sale, is happening at our high schools and will be rolling out throughout the rest of the district as we get better at implementing that. We've got a new online learning system, online management system for our medical records and we've got a school data portal that will allow schools to take all of their data and put it in one place and be able to get it out. So hopefully it will move us beyond either back of the napkin or Excel spreadsheet so that schools can easily access their data and use it in real time. Our third goal is our school, family and community engagement. Director Burke and I had the opportunity to sit in on the ethnic studies meeting here a day or so ago. Great conversations about how to implement and whether we implement everywhere, all the time versus how many people do we train when we go forward? And I really liked the, I forget the term they use. I call it the word standard. So standard number one is kind of understanding the past greatness of each culture. Standard number two is the oppression that most ethnic groups have suffered. Standard number three is the liberation portion of that and how that comes about. And standard number four is kind of taking care of implicit bias going forward and creating fair and equitable places. The African-American Advisory Committee continues to work. They've got preliminary recommendations that are being finalized for September twenty-eighth. Director Harris has worked with Kerry Campbell on our two-way engagement process, so we're pleased to have Thought Exchange as our new digital tool that will allow us to do a better job of interacting with our community. We were delighted that we've got School Messenger back and we're able to communicate much better now with particularly our families that have other languages. So I didn't do them in all those languages. I only did them in English, but others came in and helped me out and so we were able to send that message out that just went out, I think, recently, welcoming people back and that will go out to many of our families in their primary language. And then I mentioned the new websites that are out there. Coming up, ribbon cuttings, Olympic Hills and Meanie tomorrow, noon and four PM. Excited about that. And again, several of our directors were there on those tours. We'll also have tours following the ribbon cuttings here in the next few days. And then on September fifth, we'll do Cascadia, Lichten Springs and Robert Eaglestaff. I could comment on each one of those. Actually, my Friday memo did have comments on each of them, but I won't do that right now. I'll just mention Meanie. Wow. Meanie has had many, 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 many manifestations from nineteen-oh-two to the present and up until recently had four renditions that were glued together, kind of like, whatever. You couldn't get from one part of the building to another without walking all the way down one hallway and all the way back another and it was amazing. The architects did a really nice job of taking all of that and putting it back together at a, I think, very reasonable price and it, it looks and feels just like the other schools. So the first thing they did was they took us into the entry, which was at street level rather than having to go down into the dingy sub-level there. And you could look both ways. You could look one down one hallway and you could look down another hallway, which is almost the exact same thing that the architects told us in our brand-new schools, is that, hey, we've got great visibility from the office. So architects did really cool on that and for any of us who had the opportunity to be in the old building, kind of can't quite appreciate it enough in that they did awesome work on that. Community interest. Waitlist, the board acted July fifth with regard to a couple of changes in the waitlist process, most notably Whitman and Robert Eaglestaff and then matched pairings between high school students. Five-hundred-and-fifty-one new choice assignments were made using those processes over the summer, which meant a total of thirty-five-hundred-and-eighteen students got their choice out of fifty-nine-hundred students and the waitlist, I think, dissolved tomorrow or the next day. Potential school at Fort Latton has continued to express be an item of interest and I think coming up here in just a few minutes, we've got quite a few people that want to testify on that. We have worked closely with the city and with the US Department of Education and I don't think any of us like the requirements that the US Office of Education has in terms of their definition of what it means to be, have immediate need and immediate funding, but we don't meet that definition. We certainly, as many have pointed out, would love to have the property and probably could make a case that somewhere outside of the US Office of Education definitions, we have a need. I guess I take solace from the standpoint that the city, when and if they get a title, they have tentative title for thirty years and during that timeframe, if they change the designation, they go back through the process again. So I think that opens a window for us to go back through the process at some point in time when, if we have need and after we see what the city does with their planned affordable housing on that site. It's not ideal. Our staff went out and looked at it. It does have terrain changes and it does have landmarked buildings on it. Probably would work for an elementary school. So I think that we can come back and talk about that at another point in the future, but we just don't seem to meet the definition at this point. Seattle Center has been in the news, not quite accurately. So we have entered into an agreement with the city of Seattle to spend about twenty thousand dollars and have all of the parties who are interested in Seattle Center come forward and talk about what they need and see what the different potentials are for fitting all of those needs onto that site. For us, we've been very clear that we need the stadium site. There's just no other place in the city to put that. We need parking for the stadium site and unless somebody has a miracle somewhere, we need the high school site at some time fairly soon. The city, no promises, but the city wants to make this work. Other people want to make it work, so we are talking about other potential places on the Seattle Center property for a high school and some that are nearby. And I think we had a, I don't know what to call it, a table in the Friday memo that showed some of those sites that are being considered and some of the pros and cons for each of those sites. So we're not very far into it and we don't have detailed cost estimates, but we are trying to look at what the different possibilities are. We're not giving away anybody's rights to final approval. The school board will still have the right to finally approve and the way it got reported in the paper was that the city and the school district were going to design a high school together. Not really. The design is how do we make it all fit on the Seattle Center property and then after those decisions would be made, we would each go forward with our own design. We would still continue to design our high school with our ed specs, but that's way down the road somewhere. Crossing guards were part of the budget cuts that we, that the board approved. We went to the city with the hopes that we might be able to get that funded. They tried and they came back and they said, hmm, doesn't really fit under the family and education levy. So we've been scrambling, trying to find funding here. So we're in the process of moving forward, keeping some of the crossing guards, looking for funding for those and I don't know what word to use, being more rigorous in our criteria for crossing guards so that we have them, well, we probably need them everywhere, but so that we have them in our highest need areas and some of the other areas we will be discontinuing crossing guards. Online registration system, I mentioned. There are some concerns with the online registration system, particularly from some of our homeless advocates. Fow in our enrollment center has gone out and met with many of those advocates. Seattle Housing Authority has stepped up and worked with us. Our McKinney-Bento homeless office has worked through that and I think that we have fixes for all of those, but we'll continue to work with anyone that we need to work with to make sure that we're not kind of blocking anyone out of that system. And then as I mentioned at the beginning of my remarks, it's absolutely amazing how many new seats we've opened up, how much good work has been put in place. And we do have a start-of-school meeting that happens, it used to happen at seven AM, I think it happens at eight AM now, where we get together and we make our checklist of all of the things that aren't done yet and who's on it. of all of the things that aren't done yet and who's on it, and when we get back together tomorrow, who is going to follow up on that particular item. That list is much shorter than it has been in the past. However, we do have ten or so portables that didn't quite make it in under the deadline. So, we've been working with the schools to get alternate plans for how they house students and how we make the best of that situation until we get those portables in place. So, part of it is just our volume, getting the contractor to build them, and then the city allows us to move one per night, so we have to work through all of those things. And then we've had the concrete workers, and then we have the construction trades, and all of those pieces have, feeling the stress as we have sixty-two cranes in downtown Seattle trying to get the good things built for everybody. Anyway, we're behind on ten of those portables, but working hard to catch up. And finally, with good news, Hawthorne Elementary was recognized for the third year in a row by Johns Hopkins University for their outstanding leadership in parent engagement, and that was one of the replication sessions that we had at SLI, and it was standing room only in a nice, hot upstairs room at Garfield, and everybody was busily taking notes from Sandra on all of the cool things that she does to engage parents. I will be there at Hawthorne on the first day of school, and we're all excited about opening school. Literacy Project, Council of Great City Schools invited Seattle to be one of three school districts interacting with Nashville schools that uses a balanced literacy professional development process like we do, and invited us to come in and work and learn alongside of Nashville in that work, so we're excited about that. Likewise, AASA invited us to be one of five school districts to be called out in a national publication on what we can do for positive preventative closing-the-gap behavior. And so, we were delighted to do that online interview recently and getting the final information to them, and look forward to seeing what that looks like. And then, the thirteenth year is a promise scholarship for any of our seniors. So far, until now, it's been in the south portion of the district and pioneered by South Seattle Colleges. Heavy lift for them and for their foundation. I think four schools plus some of our inter-agency and middle college high schools that if you graduate on time and if you have a need and you want to go to Seattle Colleges, they will guarantee absolutely positively scholarship. So, the promise part of it is really exciting. For some kids that might not think about going to college or might not think that they have the wherewithal to do that, it's just awesome. And then, the City of Seattle, the mayor put in after the summit, I think it was $6 million, which was really seed money for North and Central Seattle campuses to start their own program. So, it was, I don't think the money was for scholarships, the money was for, who do you need to work in your foundation to go out and raise the money for scholarships? So, Ingram just let us know that North Seattle College has announced that they will be the first in, outside of the South Seattle College area, that will be offered that opportunity for this coming year. So, that's, for me, that's kind of one of the exciting parts about kind of the partnership work we've been doing with the city and ideally with some of our CBOs, in this case, Seattle Colleges. The mayor is trying to launch, before he leaves office, an education roundtable that he discussed with Director Petu and Director Peters and I a couple of months ago, with this idea that we would have district representation, city representation, and some of our community partners to do. I think Jill Wakefield, the former chancellor from Seattle Colleges, was, could we, what would it take to lift up a Seattle-wide thirteenth-year promise that says every student in Seattle has that opportunity? And we've got a shortlist, the mayor has a shortlist, but there's many others. I can never remember what it's called, our Team Reads, one that we hear in the fall that we're all excited about, that would be another one, that if we could lift that up citywide, that would be awesome. So, that's my report, and wow, we are running fast, and the school year is starting, and we've got hundreds and thousands of employees out there making good things happen for kids.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Island. So, we do not have any student comments this evening, so that brings us to the consent portion of tonight's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. Say none? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. The consent agenda has passed. So, we have now reached the public testimony portion of the agenda, but it's not yet 5:30. So, I would ask any directors who would like to give their comments now to speak now or at least begin now, and then we will begin testimony at 5:30 and come back to director comments if there is a need or desire to do so. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Director Burke, thank you.
I'll try to follow the same theme as our agenda and set a trend by being hopefully brief and concise. Many of the topics that are of interest to directors and the public and that are hot topics were covered quite well by Superintendent Island. So, I just want to touch on a couple of things, specifically welcoming all the new principals. We wish them success, we wish them amazing experiences in our schools and the opportunity to be supported by their peers, central staff, and the board, being part of the adventure. And the other thing, that this was my second summer as part of Seattle Public Schools, and so the question of what happens during the summer for SPS is something that I'm learning more and more about, because there's a mix of vacation and then also sort of preparing the ship for the next year's journey. And I know that a lot of staff took vacations, but I know that there was also a huge hive of activity, working on strategic work, systems work, opening our new buildings. You know, I was able to tour some of the buildings and see people that normally I see in the central office, like, aren't you with dots? Aren't you, you know, an instructional technology person? Like, oh, okay, you're out there helping, helping get these buildings going. And so, keeping the enterprise moving, having learned more about that this summer makes me really question whether it would even be possible to do year-round school, because that's an important break. I want to build a little bit on what Dr. Island said, on the ethnic studies task force. They've had several meetings as a task force, and then there's also work groups that are doing breakout work on actually developing curriculum materials and resources. And this is a super dedicated group of people, they're now working under the leadership of Andrea Drake, Dr. Andrea Drake. And the standards or themes that Dr. Island spoke about, the four themes, were, are inspired by the work of Oakland Public Schools. And one of the things that I learned at this last meeting last week was how we're kind of in the middle of the implementation in terms of, there are other districts that are out in front of us that are breaking the ground, and there are a lot of districts that are way behind us, and so we have, we have a, there's a lot of materials that we can draw on, so we're not truly working in this arena where we have to, have to create new all the time. So, I just wanted to really emphasize that the folks that are working on that are enthusiastic about getting things moving and developing content that actually can be, can be shared and help, and vetted at schools or pilot schools as soon as even this year. One of the other things that I had the pleasure of doing just last week was attending the Native American murals dedication at the Cascadia and Robert Eaglestaff site, and that was a, there were, I believe, two of them, and I attended the second one. Was not able, I was out of town, so I was not able to attend the first one, where Director Pinkham, I heard, gave some eloquent, some eloquent words. So, I have to say, I learned a ton from Andrew Morrison, the artist that created them, about what each of the individual figures represented and the stories behind it, and also just from talking to people in the audience that were, you know, essentially the local historians about the cultural significance and the history of the site, you know, as a spiritual and healing site. So, it was informative for me. Each of the buildings, the Robert Eaglestaff and Cascadia buildings, have an interactive display that describes the, some of the history and some of the work on the murals. There is a YouTube video that describes a little bit about the creation and the movement of the murals and getting them set up, and I just can't, can't overemphasize how cool that is, that the, you know, the community that's, that really helped elevate those, and the district and the Capitol staff really came together, and it's, it felt like a, in some ways, sort of a healing process just by getting all of those pieces in place at that site. So, it was really powerful for me. I do not have a public meeting scheduled yet, but I will by our next meeting, and the, I'll defer on conversations on hot topics until after public testimony. Thank you.
Nate, can you set up the video, please? Thank you. Let's go.
Okay. Director Harris.
We lost an extraordinary teacher last Wednesday, Janet Osborne, and watch and learn. Thank you. Thank you for that. We do a lot of things well in this district, and Janet Osborne is a real testament to that, and she is but one of extraordinary teachers that are assisting all of our 54,000 children. And all of our 54,000 children deserve that kind of a great start, and if we can't honor the people that do us honor, then we ought not be here. Appreciate it. And Kerry Campbell, Nate Van Duser, and David Dokendorf, thanks very much for helping put that together.
Director Harris, thank you very much for initiating that and doing that. I understand the first draft of, I understand, was a difficult, difficult project, but beautifully, beautifully done. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at this time? Director Pinkham, thank you.
So, I have until 5:30? Katya, and Tatskla, thank you, good evening. It has been a quick summer, and glad to be back, and I guess one of the first things I put in our notes here is to have everyone's thoughts and prayers and minds out to those suffering from Hurricane Harvey, you know, it's very devastating what's happening down there to their schools. I'm part of a community or association of multicultural junior programs, and Texas A&M had to shut down for a while because of, you know, what they experienced, so I can understand what the schools themselves have to go through, their families. So, thoughts and prayers out to people in those communities that are impacted. Definitely welcome back to the students, teachers, and staff and administrators to the 2017-18 school year, and thank you to the new principals that showed up earlier. Hopefully, we'll see good things come with, basically starting a new year, just like with the eclipse that we had, you know, some of the native communities out there, look at that, it's just another sign of change, a sign of renewal. So, it's for some people to be amazed that they usually think that a lot of tribes are superstitious, but they knew how to track lunar calendars, the solar calendars, and they knew this was a sign of change, and hopefully we can jump on with that. Change is coming, and change is here, such as the new bell times, early release days. Now, like I talked about yesterday, people that welcome it, there's some, ew, is this going to be something that's going to work for us? But hopefully, everyone will acknowledge that it is something that we can see as hopefully an opportunity that change. What value can you find? What value can we find from it, and continue to proceed onwards and upwards. Congratulations to the new schools opening this year. Particularly close to me would be the Robert Eaglestaff Middle School in Lipton Springs, K-8, who along with Cascadia, will open on the former Wilson Pacific Site, which does have cultural significance to the first inhabitants of this area. And I do want to thank Principal Maury Campbell, and welcome back the Urban Native Education Alliance to that site where they can work out of and help serve students in the Seattle School District. I do not want to overlook the needs for our current schools as well, because with our new schools opening, we still have a lot of current schools and buildings that are in need of fix and repair, and hopefully, we'll see we can do this. Because I think some of our schools are out there saying, "I'm tired of hearing, wait for the next levy, wait for the next levy." And with these new changes in the system, can they indeed wait for the next levy? What can we spend the levy monies on? What can we raise it for? So hopefully, we can work with the state out there to make sure all of our buildings are up and ready to go, to equitably educate all of our youth out there. I kind of mentioned, as far as this should just mean a time of recovery with the new things that are coming along. So I hope everyone takes on that perspective. We'll hopefully nurture those things that work for us, and look at those that haven't, and move the school district further forward. I don't have a community meeting scheduled yet, but same as Director Burke, I will hopefully announce one next week for our next regular board meeting, a meeting in September, so we can start hearing from our community. I'm looking out, trying to arrange a meeting to go out to Leschi, got invited out there by Michael, how do you pronounce his last name? Tomayo?
Tomayo.
Tomayo, to arrange to go and visit that school. And as we talk about a new high school, we hear things about Fort Lawn, we hear about the Seattle Center and the Memorial Stadium. So I guess I'll just put my two cents in here. If we're talking about a new high school, it'd be nice to open a new high school called American Indian Heritage High School. Just something to think about. Katia, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else like to speak at this time? Director Gary, thank you.
Welcome back, everybody. Fall is such an exciting time of the year. You get so excited, the weather starts to change, kids are coming back to school, that sense of renewal. And I think after this summer, we had the sort of the warm days, the smoke, and now it's time for it all to clear out and for everybody to return to school bright-eyed and ready to learn. And that's how I approached the year. And that's exciting. We have new principals in our school, and it was lovely to get to meet them and recognize them. We have new schools, and I know for the families and the kids that get to go to those schools, that's always exciting. I think that that does a lot to invigorate anybody, to see a beautiful environment. And so the more that we can do, and remember that we still have families and schools that need that makeover, so that we know that that will have a big impact on the families that go to some of our schools that have been waiting for that remodel. Had the pleasure to attend the Summer Leadership Institute. And I think the lovely thing about that is that it demonstrates that we're treating our leaders like professionals. We're giving them an opportunity to get together, get some professional development, but mostly to interact with each other. And I thought that that was great. I know that they appreciated that a lot, because while we all know somebody can sit at the front of the room and lecture, it's the connection and the relationships that they get to make with each other. And then when they're out in their buildings and talking or running up against issues, that they have a connection and a community now that they know and can talk with. And so I so appreciate that event and the excitement that people expressed for those I don't have a lot to say today. I do want to put everybody on notice that one of the issues that I think comes up and that we hear, we heard a lot towards the end of the year, and now is going to be the time for us to start looking at it, is going to be the Student Assignment Plan. And so I know that that has been a big issue about how we do it, what are the procedures, what are the unwritten procedures? How is this happening? How is it being developed? So now is the time, if you want to have input on that, to start thinking about it. Look over the Student Assignment Plan and contact your board directors, attend their community meetings, do it proactively, and that way, we'll have a chance to look at it with a critical eye and make sure that your interests are being expressed through the Student Assignment Plan. I am particularly interested in making sure that we are able to meet the individual needs of our children with disabilities through that process. I know I've heard from, over the year, starting in February, you start hearing from families about their concerns about how their kids are going to be addressed, and their needs are going to be addressed. And it's always the tension between, we're treating kids like everybody else, but let's always remember there are certain kids out there where their individual needs are what we need to be able to meet. And so we'll be looking specifically at that as that process rolls out. But rather than waiting, think about that now. I know wait lists, all of those issues that have been so important to people over the last year, and we heard so much about, now is our time to bring a critical eye to it and work on that. I'm going to start again with my morning meetings. With the bell time schedule change, it will be a little bit different. I won't be able to do the 7:30 meeting, because now I have to get my daughter to school at 8 o'clock, but maybe right after that. So if you're interested in that, go to my school board webpage or Facebook page, and I usually post on that whether or not I'm able to make that morning meeting. It's hard to know in advance, because things come up with school with kids that make it really difficult. But if you're interested in it, if you're able to go, check in the mornings, see if I'm doing it, and I always post to let people know I'm there. And I will be also posting for my community meeting. This year, I'm going to really work hard to see if I can get my meetings down in the Magnuson area, because I know, we've heard a lot about what's been happening in Sandpoint, and it's of great concern to the families in my district, what they can do to help. And one of the things that was posted is that the families in the Sandpoint housing really want to feel part of the community. And the way we can do that is go down and be present in their community. Make sure that when we're at the playgrounds playing, that we introduce ourselves, that we make those connections, we make those relationships, that we're part of their community. We make the effort to go to them, because they don't have, for many reasons, they need to stay within their community, and that's upon the families who want to go in there and do that, reaching out to go there. So I'm going to do my part, and I'm going to really work hard to use the Magnuson Community Center, even go into the park and meet. So look for that, and I hope that families will join me, even if it does mean sitting under an outdoor, at one of the outdoor picnics in the shelter on a chilly day in our fall sweaters, to talk about Seattle Public Schools and what we can do to make them great. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gary. You still have time? Director Petu.
Hello, I just want to welcome all the new principals and the old principals back to school year, our new school year, and I'm looking forward to also to welcoming all our parents and students to our new school year. I really appreciate attending the Summer Institute Summit. I've had conversation with some of the principals, and they tell me that it's one of the best summits that the district has sponsored in a long time. And I think they're right. I thought it was very interesting, and a lot of the areas that were discussed at the summit. So congratulations, staff, superintendent, for a job well done. And also, it's been a very long summer, and I'm glad another year has come upon us. And it's been also a great summer, finally able to take some time off this year and be able to get away from Seattle. And it's actually nice to be able to take some time off and come back and start fresh. So I really think this is going to be a good year, and hopefully, that we'll be able to accomplish a lot of things that we said we're going to do, and hopefully, continue on to make a difference in areas that we need to improve on. And as we discussed, we talked about the waitlist, and I know I've got a lot of emails on the waitlist, but we're hoping that we can continue to go through that and make some good choices in terms of how do we move that in a positive direction. So welcome everyone back for a good, hopefully, a good, wonderful year this year.
Thank you, Director Petu. Director Blanford.
I joined my colleagues in welcoming the new principals to Seattle Public Schools. I had a chance to meet some of them at the Elsalai meeting that was held, and believe really strongly, I think all of us up here believe really strongly, that leadership, particularly building-based leadership, is a really crucial element in our ability to improve instruction for all of our students and to close our opportunity gaps. And so I celebrate and encourage you to exert that leadership in your buildings this year. I was thrilled to have the opportunity to walk through the building with Superintendent Nylin, the Meany Middle School building, and am very excited to participate in the ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow. That building, in many ways, was labyrinthine. It was very difficult to get from one place to another. And as we were walking through last week, it felt like a transformed building. I think it will be great for the students that are coming to school there, and the staff that we saw that were busy getting their rooms ready for them. I think it's going to be an exciting year for all involved. I was really happy to hear that Hawthorne Elementary School won the John Hopkins Award for Community Engagement. And I hope that serves as an exemplar to all of the principals and school communities about what can be done to reach out to communities, engage with them in authentic ways that enlist their involvement in their individual schools. I think that's a crucial factor in whether or not we're going to continue to make the progress that we're very proud of. And as I was listening to my colleagues talking, I was thinking a little bit about a couple years ago, at the start of school, when my opportunity came to speak, and I referenced the fact that there had been a number of incidences that were precipitated by a racial incident that happened somewhere in our country. And as I was listening to my colleagues today, it made me reflect a little bit on what happened in Charlottesville a few weeks ago. And back then, I said that I think that it is crucial that our educators, to the extent possible, if they feel comfortable, that they take this opportunity to have a teaching moment with their students. The students that I've encountered since Charlottesville happened are very interested in having an understanding of what happened. And I think in a city like ours, there is a great opportunity to educate, to engage our students. That said, the same warning or caveat that I issued then, I will issue again now. Those conversations are very difficult, and many people come at them from really different perspectives. And whereas those perspectives need to be all engaged and taken seriously, I think it's also important that those who are facilitating those conversations have some training, because those conversations can spin out of control and can lead to a school or a classroom that can be perceived as hostile to some. And so it is critically important that our educators, if they have not done so already, access the materials that are readily available, so that they can engage with all of their students in the most respectful way. I looked at the Teaching Tolerance website recently, and they have updated a number of their materials, so that educators around the country can go into those conversations with their students in a way that they can provide leadership and guidance and support for their students who are hungry to understand the complicated situation that is taking place in Charlottesville and across the nation. So I wanted to go not last, but second to last, because I was busy trying to secure some community meetings while online. And I was fortunate that I was able to do that. The Seattle Public Library's system now will allow you to actually make the reservations. They don't tell you that they're confirmed, so I will give you these dates and hope that I get confirmation, and we'll make sure and let our staff know, so that it can be loaded up on the website. But I have a meeting scheduled for September 23, from 10 to 12 o'clock, and that's scheduled at the Douglas Truth Library, as is the one that is in October on the 28th, also from 10 to 12. And I think that might be my last community meeting. So hopefully, there'll be lots of people there, and it'll be as robust a conversation as they always were. And finally, if anyone noticed that I came into this room a little bit late, didn't get a chance to engage with many of the new principals, that was because I chose to stay at home for a little while today, because my rising ninth grader came back from orientation. And as a family that's been involved in Seattle Public Schools for another number of years, I used to work in this building. My wife has a 20-year career in Seattle Public Schools. And our only beloved child started as a kindergartner in Seattle Public Schools, and now is going to be a rising ninth grader at Garfield High School. It was a pretty profound moment to just think about the involvement that we've had in Seattle Public Schools, and our treasured daughter now moving on to the last stage of her Seattle Public Schools experience. And so I got a chance to engage with her a little bit, and to discover that her concerns about making friends were not well-placed. She said she had 10 new friends when she came home today, so I knew that that was going to be the case, so I wasn't very worried about it. But as someone who's worked for Seattle Public Schools and serves on the board, and has entrusted our daughter's future to Seattle Public Schools, I just want to take this opportunity at the beginning of the year to say thanks to all of the educators who have been involved in, that I've worked with, that have worked with my child or my wife, and that have worked really hard for all 54,000 students that we have in the district. I'm looking forward to great things happening in 2017/18, and I'll be watching intently, even though I won't necessarily be on standing up or sitting up here after December 1, or whenever our last meeting is. So thank you, and I look forward to talking to you soon.
Thank you, Director Blanford. Director Harris.
Again, thank you, Carrie, Nate, for assisting on that tribute to Janet. It's hard to say goodbye to somebody that made such a big difference in your and your child's life and in a school community. To say that the Pathfinder community right now is grieving is an understatement. On the other hand, that's what community's for, is to help each other get through it. Janet had a blog, and she talked about education, she talked about dying. And here are the two Salmon Clan books, and you're welcome to look at those during the break, and I encourage you to do so, because what it does is it emphasizes creative teaching. encourage you to do so, because what it does is it emphasizes creative teaching, it emphasizes teaching across the disciplines, and having young people exploring how the connections work, poetry, art, their bodies. Those young people now, most every one of them is in college and are rock stars, and certainly they have had the benefit of privilege, but mostly they had the benefit of an extraordinary start and a thoughtful, tight community and an incredibly hard-working teacher. And I know that this district is full of those kind of folks. Things I've been up to. July 15th, we had a very rowdy community engagement meeting out in West Seattle, District 6. Capacity challenges are right on the top of the list, and welcome to District 6, Mr. And we had lasagna, and it was good. On August 15th, we had a group of PTSA parents from throughout District 6 to figure out ways to help each other. We hear a lot about high-need schools in the southeast, not so much in other districts, and we certainly have them in West Seattle and South Park, and we need ways to work with each other, to lift each other up. On that note, Highland Park and Rocks Hill, now going to EC Hughes, need new playgrounds. And new schools get new playgrounds, but Title I schools don't get new playgrounds, so they have to go out and raise the money themselves. I have asked staff if they could put that piece into the race and equity tool, and if we can figure out better ways to get where we need to be. Because if you don't have a PTSA, how do you raise those funds? How is that equitable? Capacity is a big deal out in West Seattle. We've been talking about having a capacity carnival. Associate Superintendent Herndon is going to help us do that. We're going to make it a party. It's going to be rowdy, as I'm sure you all recall. On June 1st, Associate Superintendent Herndon and Facilities Director Best were booed off the stage at Buren Pre-K 8 by parents that don't understand our process, and we need to do a better job, and we're going to do a better job of explaining that and thinking outside the box. Fort Lawton. I've heard from a number of folks in this room, and a number of folks in this room have heard from me. I don't accept no as an answer, never have, probably never will. Do I appreciate that the Department of Education is, personal opinion, ill-functioning presently? Do I appreciate that there are lots of regulations? I do, but I've also spent my other career, 35 years, changing those kinds of regulations and going to people like Senator Patty Murray and others and asking them to change those regulations. I also believe that land banking, by the time we get through the crazy, we will have that need, no question about it. And I also think that we can do a much better job of explaining our story, especially during the times that we aren't having regular Friday memos and we're not having as many board And I think we will do that, and I think we'll learn some more here during public testimony. Amici briefs were filed today in McLeary. The website is ac.courts.wa.gov. There are a number of community organizations that have worked very hard to assist us in our everlasting journey for equity for our children. I encourage you to read them. I encourage you to say thank you to the organizations that have worked so very, very hard. Little miffed at the Supreme Court that they didn't allow us to put our own amicus brief in, however, I'm really proud of this district that we were ready to go, that we anticipated it, and we could take our really solid work product and share it with Tom Ahern of the News Lead Attorney, so that it did not go for not. And if we aren't anticipatory and all teed up, then we would have missed the opportunity. So props to you all, thank you very much for that. Back to Fort Lawton and the city. I am awaiting the day where the Seattle Public Schools has a seat at the table for the Hala conversations. The fact that we do not is mind-blowing to me. And I suspect that both mayoral candidates will be getting those questions, and I hope they get them from a great number of people. I want to follow up on Superintendent Nylund's comments with respect to South Seattle College and the 13th year. One of the things that is so extraordinary about the 13th year is the wraparound services and the onboarding process. You're at college, what do you do? Well, we're going to show you, we're going to help you, and we're going to be there for you. So it's not, "Go get your college credit, young people," it's, "I'm here to help you, come to me," and/or, "I'm watching you, and I'm going to help you because I see you're not making it." And that kind of, as we all know, personal relationship really matters, and just because they're 18 doesn't mean they're going to be rock stars without those kinds of relationships. I want a little pushback here on some of the things I've read about the CSIPS. It is in fact a new day on the CSIPS, and I'm told that we're going to hear more about them from the podium and from Chief Storowski. And I'm really proud of the fact that it's a new day for the CSIPS. This is not rubber stamp time, and no, your board has not looked the other way. And with all due respect for folks that want to cast a wide brush, I challenge you to understand the facts behind those statements, because frankly, it hurts, and we don't deserve it. And we are making progress, and I'm proud of that progress, and it's an honor to sit up here with my colleagues who all care. Thank you.
Thank you Director Harris. So Directors, we'll have an opportunity to respond to public testimony after public testimony as well. So we have now reached 5:30, a little bit beyond, and we will go on to public testimony. The rules are on the screen, and I would ask that speakers be respectful of these rules. I would note that the board does not take public comments on items related to personnel or individually named staff. I would also like to note that each speaker has a two-minute speaking time. When the two minutes have ended, please conclude your remarks. Ms. Scheck will read off the testimony speaker's names. Thank you.
First up for public testimony, we have Chris Jackins, followed by Daniel Dickinson and Valerie Cooper.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On the solar energy contract, four points. Number one, the contract has goals for minority-owned businesses of 10%, but the plan would provide 0%. Number two, the guaranteed annual energy savings is $59,000. The total project cost is $2.3 million. This means that the project will break even in 38 years. Number three, 38 years is longer than school district roofs last and longer than paying for the district headquarters. Number four, so the project seems to be a giveaway of public money, and the district won't give a cut to minority, women, veteran, and small businesses. Please vote no. On deaf and hard-of-hearing DHH issues. Some months back, district staff promised to publish an update on DHH issues. Laura Graemer, a member of the DHH community, said to mention to you that she is still interested in seeing the memo. On the League of Education Voters $2 million grant to South Shore, four points. Number one, is this grant consistent with state efforts to equalize state funding between districts? Number two, the agreement requires the district to provide pre-K transportation. Is pre-K transportation covered by state funding? Number three, the grant agreement has two sections labeled number five. Number four, the foundation gets a special say in selecting the principal. Giving wealthy donors special rights in public schools is a mistake. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Dickinson.
Good evening Directors. Superintendent Nylund, my name is Dan Dickinson. I live in Magnolia. I have a rising kindergartner, starting in just a few days, at Lawton. I am here tonight just to implore you, as part of your stewardship of this district, to push hard as a board and look deeply into the strategic issue of putting a school at the Fort Lawton site. It's really going to be a once-in-a-century opportunity at this point to place a school in greenfield free land in the heart of a neighborhood that needs more capacity. Right now in Seattle, everyone knows upzoning, changing zoning, massive influxes of people are happening all around us, and that's not going to change. The changes that have happened to make this town so prosperous are not going to go away anytime soon, and it's really, really important that we look hard at your numbers to make sure those projections are accurate. I know many of us in the community feel like those projections are not accurate, and we don't want to be in a situation, it sounds like maybe West Seattle is in a situation now where there's a dramatic capacity crisis. Even if today it doesn't feel like there is any immediate need, when I hear immediate need, I also think crisis point. It's time to, again, as the strategic leaders of this district, look hard at an option that will keep us out of that immediate need, keep us out of those crisis situations, and capitalize on a once-in-a-very, very-long-time opportunity that you have at Fort Lawton. I really hope that, as part of that, we can look at doing either a STEM program or perhaps a Native Heritage program. It would be a great location, obviously, for either being so near to Discovery Park and to the Burning White Bear Center out in Magnolia. So you're going to hear more about this tonight, but please, as the stewards and leaders of this district, get involved, do what you have to do to change the regulations if that's what has to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
After Valerie Cooper, we will have Lisa Evans, Jessica Smits, and Eric Blumenhagen.
Hi, Valerie Cooper here. Number one, school improvement plans are to be data-driven. It's integral that the data is correct. CSIPS cannot be achieved if capacity challenges are threatening to the functioning of schools. Number two, regarding the importance of accurate data, we disagree that our Fort Lawton school movement is out of sync with an immediate or imminent need for capacity. We are saying capacity issues are bigger than identified by SPS, and the increased number of students in our cluster is going to substantially outpace growth projections. This is why an opportunity for free land is necessary to capitalize upon. Be clear that you are hearing a say that we fear a capacity crisis. This is based off of what we see with the right-size classroom capacity projections, not even correct McLeary numbers, which will require more classrooms. Why a crisis? We see 59 three-bedroom-plus townhouse development going up at 10th and Magrón, Queen Anne. It got passed through the city claiming fewer than five children at the development. Upzoning, densification, young families, thousands of Amazon employees moving in, and it's not slowing down. We've lost schools in our cluster, and we do not have adequate representation on Hala, thus this is a point to be addressed. In the letter to the Office of Housing, Magnolia Elementary was stated as having 500 seats, which would be added to our cluster. This is not in fact true. The students are shifting out of 17 portables, teacher lounges, computer labs, and hallways within the cluster. There will be no open seats at Magnolia Elementary when it opens. Capacity crisis? It could be alleviated. However, if a school is not built at Fort Lawton site, 150 family units will be built at Fort Lawton site. That could use 100 to 400 students, and we're automatically at an immediate need for a new building and would be experiencing a capacity crisis. We're asking you to be proactive and not reactive. We formally request that the school board of directors be given an opportunity to give an up or down vote, asking for a school to be added to the EIS at Fort Lawton. No stone unturned, consider Patty Murray as an option as well. Thank you very much. You also have handouts for me.
Thank you.
Approval of schools and that CSIPS be data-driven promote a positive impact on school learning includes a continuous improvement process. While a noble concept to hold school sites accountable to, why is the equivalent not happening at the executive level at this district? Data-driven shouldn't only include test scores, teacher performance, and ensuring families' engagement, but also what we have learned from our past. All of this should be happening from the top down. There must be accountability for the performance of senior staff to engage, respond to, and work with the public and partners. Accountability to demonstrate due diligence. Accountability that staff tasked with the job must provide accurate data and projections. School clusters cannot plan accordingly when management continually fails to be proactive, to plan, to work, or even to listen to community partners who have the most accurate information and insight, be that task forces, city planners, permits office, DOH, Hala, or the families that continually bring to downtown's attention issues like capacity constraints, abysmal building conditions, the crush of preschoolers and new families in all of our neighborhoods. Asking schools to continually improve and positively impact learning cannot and will not happen if downtown is not equally transparent or committed to that same process. Passing on Fort Lawton is indicative of the senior staff's failure to do all of these things. Did no one learn anything from Sandpoint Elementary? The city's commitment to low-income housing translates to customers for public schools. Is there school planning for the housing at Fort Lawton? No. The superintendent's August 7th letter to the Office of Housing says, "No one from the DOE responded to our emails or calls." How sad. No family has ever dealt with that when they are advocating for a student, have they? Saying out of one side of your mouth that there's no immediate need, then pleading out of the other side to tell us about any potential land and building is disingenuous. This last Friday's memo said that there is only recent public interest in the site. Really? Please. For four years, my, Diane Casper, and others have personally asked Capitol and Facilities to look and consider the Fort Lawton site. That is not recent. This same memo highlights several calls took place with the city and with the DOE. But didn't the superintendent's letter say on August 7th that they could not reach the DOE? Which is it?
Please conclude your remarks.
So are you going to hold downtown accountable on their failure to adhere to what you are then asking schools to do?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Smits. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. I am the mother of a preschooler and a second grader at Catherine Blaine. I am here to ask that the school board be involved in any decision regarding school district use of the free land at Fort Lawton. Please don't let your engagement end with Dr. Nylund's letter to Seattle's Office of Housing. It was alarming to hear in his letter that the Department of Education did not return repeated phone calls and emails to help the district pursue this free land, but I urge you not to throw your hands up. Ask our state senators for help. Patty Murray is the ranking member of the Senate Education Committee. Please give this opportunity the effort it deserves. A quick drive through Magnolia and Queen Anne will show you new houses and new townhomes being built. A glance at the Seattle Times headlines just this past weekend will show you the news of the ever-increasing influx of people to businesses like Amazon and beyond. Our city is booming, and our schools need to respond accordingly. We are simply out of space now, and it is only going to get worse. The district must improve its projection numbers and understand our true capacity needs before turning down free land that could be used for a school. The housing at Fort Lawton is slated to include 150 new units alone. Where will the children in these families go to school? On 38 acres of land, why can't we build both a school and affordable housing? Affordable housing and overcapacity are pressing issues in our community, and this land could alleviate both. Please don't walk away from this opportunity. Fight for it. Fight for our Fight for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Eric Blumenhagen, followed by Ethan Rogers and Alex Cooper.
Hello again. In a week, school starts again, and it's a really exciting time. 54,000 students heading to a couple thousand classrooms in over 100 schools. But honestly, I'm a little scared, too, because we have several schools, including two high schools, Garfield and Ballard, that are stretched to the breaking point. And it's been getting worse every year, and we have been not seeing the change. And we don't know what's actually going to, who's going to show up to those schools. We don't know how many students there are going to be, because things change over the summer. We do our best with projections, but those last couple of percent that we miss on the projections can be what tips over the school and breaks it. Now, here's what you can do. If you don't take action tonight, tomorrow, the only tool remaining for the district to manage those issues on start day of school will dissolve, when the waitlists dissolve. If you keep the waitlists open until September 15th or September 30th, then you have a chance to deal with the unexpected. If you don't, you don't. Nothing's saying, if you keep the waitlists open, that you have to move them. But if you don't have them open, you can't. So why would you give up the opportunity to fix a problem instead of just letting it go and hoping for the best? Thank you. Also, for the Fort Lawton, if there's a concern about being able to open a school in three years, there are all kinds of programs within the school district that are in the 100 to 200-student range that could be located in the existing buildings on a temporary basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Rogers. I have a son, Casey, who is on the number six at the moment on the Ingram HCC waitlist. And he has also spoken to you before. Please hold the waitlist open until September 15th, or as long as is necessary for enrollment planning, to, one, complete the waitlist swaps as directed by the board's July 5th motion, and, two, to allow enrollment planning to further move waitlists based on no-shows at the start of the school year. This includes that Ingram ninth-grade waitlist. On July 4th, the motion that this board passed stated in the part pertinent to these remarks that, quote, "High schools with seat and space capacity be allowed to move their waitlists through waitlist trades that do not impact total enrollment." I don't pretend to speak for the board, but in that, in theirs, there's nothing about the program in the way it was worded. Enrollment planning has interpreted it that it had to be program-to-program. This entirely cut out the HCC program at Ingram from these waitlist swaps. Mr. Associate Superintendent Herndon was very kind to give me a few moments before the meeting. He did indicate that tomorrow, that all the Gen Ed to Gen Ed swaps had been completed, and that tomorrow, they would have time in the morning to start looking to see whether they, in fact, could do HCC to Gen N swaps. By my calculations, there's at least a dozen, maybe more, of these potential swaps that could happen. That's 24 families that could be further satisfied if they're given the time to make these swaps. Also, the HCC has been cut out from this. If five HCC students don't show up at Ingram and haven't given word, that's five more students who could be taken off that HCC waitlist and moved into the HCC program that they want to get at. It's the one waitlist that's been, up until very recently, has had not had any chance to move at all. There again, and the final point is, there has never been an Ingram HCC waitlist before. They were always able to accommodate it. We need to accommodate it just a little bit longer to do as much as we can in order to give the families both some Gen Ed and some HCC as much satisfaction as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for public testimony, we have Alex Cooper, followed by Sarah Coulter and Melissa Westbrook.
Hello, I'm Alex Cooper, and I have concerns that school capacity will not keep pace with Seattle's rapid growth. Have concerns that the school district is not taking advantage of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to obtain the Fort Lawton land currently available in Discovery Park. The city of Seattle will grow by 120,000 people in the next 20 years. Seattle Public Schools projects a five-year student growth of 3,600 students by 2020. It's only three years away. There is no doubt that student numbers will continue to grow past 2020. Concerned citizens of Seattle have gone to great length to provide SPS with this Fort Lawton land opportunity. This land opportunity is surrounded by trees and views of the sound that represent everything that is Seattle and the Pacific Northwest. If you've not seen the land yourself, I encourage you to do so. Dr. Nyland recently turned down this piece of land citing concerns about a lack of immediate need and immediate funding. If the superintendent and board are looking for a no answer on this land, they will easily find it. If you want a yes answer for this land, I have no doubt that a motivated superintendent and school board could make this happen. I ask the Seattle School Board members and Dr. Nyland to reevaluate SPS's ability to obtain this free land opportunity. I encourage you to communicate further with the Department of Education to create ways this land transfer could work. Ask you to, again, review the rules pertaining to such a land transfer. My understanding is that if SPS does not build a school in the required three-year timeline, there may be a penalty, but perhaps that penalty on a free piece of land would be less the amount of money needed to purchase a new piece of land in the Seattle area, where no land exists. I encourage you to view this piece of land as an opportunity for all students in the district. This opportunity is not just a school for Magnolia. Extra land and extra schools, no matter where they are built, means a reduction in school crowding throughout the district. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Coulter. I have a second grader at Lawton Elementary and a preschooler as well. I truly believe that all students should have access to a strong public school system. In my own life, it opened doors, provided stability, and leveled the playfield. I'm here today out of concern regarding the Fort Lawton site. There seems to be a very strong disconnect between the district's plans and the feedback from families who live here. We've seen very strong community support for a school to be included as an option for the Fort Lawton site. This is highlighted by three data points. Number one, the city just released their scoping report for this project. It lists 189 supporters for their affordable housing and park plan. However, it lists 293 supporters for a school. A school was not even listed as an option on their proposal, yet it had 55% more supporters than the plan they presented. Number two, we quickly gathered over 1,200 signatures on a change.org petition. The comments provide rich insight into the potential school uses for this land. Number three, we did a survey with almost 400 users, and when asked where they'd prefer a high school for Magnolia and Queen Anne students, 75% said Fort Lawton, only 20% said Seattle Center, and 5% said other. Again, the community support for a school on this site is huge. Please continue to push to get this land for free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. The 13th year mentioned by the superintendent, just so you know, mayoral candidate Jenny Durkin wants to expand on this idea, but wants to get some of the money for the Families in Education levy, which would be problematic for the programs in Seattle schools funded by those dollars, as well to consider that levy comes up for renewal about 2019 and may include in that round charter schools. Just a heads up. I am quite sad the district is not going to do everything it can to acquire free land again. It's odd, because the superintendent said in his letter to the city, "It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity." Actually, it's a twice-in-a-lifetime, because we let the Federal Reserve building get away from us. I certainly know there are barriers, but I perceive they could be worked out, especially with help from corporate citizens. I'm not sure how we don't meet the definition, but it would be nice to see that in writing. What I think is happening is that district staff don't want a single thing to get in the way of their outsized dream of a high school at Memorial Stadium. And yet, you are opening one high school and several, Rayner Beach, West Seattle, Cleveland, are not full. Also, how come if we give the city free space in Seattle schools for preschool, that we don't get free space for center school? It would seem like a fair swap to be able to have that kind of thing. I think the solar project that you're voting on tonight is misguided with so much maintenance needed throughout the district. And the money's coming from Bex 2 and 3. Why are there so many extra dollars floating around when the needs are great? It speaks to Director Pinkham's point about other schools needing help. It speaks to Director Harris's point about playgrounds at Title I schools. So that's not so good. As for the South Shore thing, I am very glad that you've changed that to an intro, because we're not in an emergency, so we don't need an intro and action. And I'm very glad that you changed the policy there around principles. It must remain with the district. It must remain with the superintendent. And I just want to say, not so happy on the new website. I tried to just look up something about executive directors, and I can't even pull up a page. So, next time.
Thank you.
This concludes the sign-up list for public testimony this evening.
Thank you, everybody, for coming to speak tonight. We'd now like to extend the opportunity to any directors who would like to respond to any of the comments they heard tonight. Director Burke.
I want to start with an oversight from round one, which is, as we were identifying and acknowledging new principles, I want to identify and acknowledge new central staff as well. You know where I'm going. Caleb Perkins, Director College and Career Readiness. I just want to welcome you. Caleb is taking over from Dan Gallagher, and I'm excited for the vision that he brings and the work that he's going to be doing. Not to say that there's a lot of it, but there's a lot of it. So the two hot topics that I want to touch on around waitlists and the capacity planning, Fort Lawton downtown school. I appreciate Director Harris's strong perspective and enthusiasm around the Fort Lawton site, because I know that the, it wasn't immediately obvious that this was something that Seattle could capture, could be an opportunity. And as the public has daylighted more things and staff has tried to vet them, the bar for acquiring that land continues to be higher. But I concur with Director Harris that maybe we haven't gotten to the point where we should write it off, that, you know, some of the political conversations that can be had around truly understanding what are the, you know, are we looking at some type of administrative boilerplate barrier that is being put in place by, you know, federal organizations that truly don't understand the situation or the dynamics in Seattle? Or is this a reality? So I'm interested to explore that further as a board and as a leadership body, with the recognition that if we don't get it this time, we want to be really explicit about building this type of opportunity into our long-term strategic planning, so that we are more proactive on future opportunities, whether it's a downtown school, whether it's a reservoir site, whether it's any other type of properties that could come up in the future. The waitlists, I would actually like to ask directly to Associate Superintendent Herndon regarding the moving of waitlists, if the topics that were shared by public are appropriate, that you will be looking at sort of cross-program waitlist moves prior to dissolving the waitlists, if that's something that's being considered.
Yes, Associate Superintendent Herndon. Yes, we'll be looking at that tomorrow morning.
Wonderful, thank you. And would it be possible for you to quickly comment on if there's a value or an advantage to enrollment planning on having the waitlist as a resource for start-of-school shortages that could, you know, if a building was short on enrollment, to be able to have a pool of people to potentially draw from to help populate that school so they didn't lose staff?
Well, I think the challenge and the reason why we moved it is, you're moving students from one building to another. So if you do that, that means another building will be losing students and could possibly be losing staff. So this was an attempt to stop that staff kind of merry-go-round of reassignment and who's qualifying for how much staff.
Appreciate the comment on that, because I know that's something that had been discussed with the board as part of this previous Student Assignment Transition Plan work to, you know, identify the dates for that, that we truly do want to minimize disruption in our schools.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Director Harris.
I just want to say thank you for the folks that have done some really impressive, heavy lifting. Thanks for showing up to get counted. I certainly hope that we can make this work, but if it doesn't, I hope you feel heard, and I hope you feel more respected. Thank you.
Director Giri.
I'm going to share this perspective on the Lawton issue, just because my district is the district that has Sandpoint. And the whole project gives me so much concern, because we have a housing project in one of our parks that is being severely underserved by the city. They have moved in and are going to continue to move in families that are not supported by community-based organizations, because there aren't a lot of community-based organizations in lower northeast Seattle. And they're not going to get the numbers they need in order to relocate there. So we have families that are at least living on a bus route that can take them up to Northgate and can take them down to the Link, and they have some access to move around. But they don't even have a grocery store that they can get to. And so the city has a community center that they're not investing in. It is leased out to two private schools that use the majority of the space. It's inadequately staffed to meet the student, the population that lives there. And they won't commit to making it work. And we've seen several tragedies in that park now, this summer. So the whole project just makes me so incredibly nervous, and it's not supported properly. And I would say, as a community, make sure that they've done it right in one place before they move on and do it in another place. Because what happens is, you put a school in there, and as the social safety net is not built in that case, or dismantled, it falls on the school. But our schools are not funded to be the complete social safety net for such a situation. And so then you have a school that has a lot of problems in it, that the people in the community who live there, who have money, can choose to go elsewhere. And then, when the enrollment drops, as it has at Sandpoint Elementary, you don't have the extra resources to build up the supports, to meet the needs of the kids who have been left stranded there because the social safety net isn't in place. So I appreciate what you're saying, but the whole thing just makes me so incredibly nervous. So those are my thoughts, just so I make them transparent to everybody, because it's hard for me to get beyond that in the conversation, as much as I understand and hear the other aspects that you're bringing in. I think the conversation needs to slow down, and we need to make sure that free land isn't the only thing that's on the table. It's what does this whole thing mean, and do we have government agencies that are really committing to support what they're building?
Director Pinkham.
Thank you to all the public testimony speakers tonight. Appreciate you coming here, as we're starting up a new year, and though it was a short list, I think we have some valuable information from you. And yes, I do And yes, I do look to you to finally appreciate the research that you've done and what you bring forward that we can then share with the staff here and see, you know, what can be done. And I have to admit that hopefully we won't take no for an answer. You know, I never did that when I was a child, a kid, but my parents, they tell me, no, I'd go right back and try again. Or get a no from the dad, go ask the mom, kind of a thing. So, I would like to see us still pursuing. Definitely acknowledge what Director Geary is saying, you know, let's look at lessons learned from what we had with Sandpoint. What is going right, what is not going right there? And how we can proceed from there. Again, let's take things as learning opportunities and make sure, again, we're always moving forward. So, you know, is it going to be different with a high school versus an elementary school? What are those impacts there that we have to take in consideration? For the waitlists, another kind of question for... So, if we do still have, after neither no-shows or stuff that go on, if a school isn't impacted by moving one student from one school to another school, is that still a possibility? So, if I can move two students from this school to Ingram and it won't impact the school that they're moving from, is that still something we can do?
No, once the waitlists are dissolved, SPS enrolled students don't have the opportunity to move between schools unless they were to move their physical address. And then, and then that's how they would move. But we don't move students once, once they've started and are enrolled in that situation. Obvious exceptions would be if a student had an IEP and they had an assignment to another school, obviously that would happen. If a student was in a homeless situation, sometimes that would happen where that changes as well.
I guess so. I guess it gets that idea where we're look like we're having a practice where we see, okay, we won't move schools if it impacts another school negatively. But I think some of our community members, hey, if we're not going to impact that school negatively, can I still possibly get my child into a school that is going to serve them or meet their needs a bit better than the current one that I'm assigned to? So, if the waitlists are dissolved, seems like, no, that we wouldn't be able to do that. So, I'd be wondering if there is just something we can look at to maybe address such issues for this year or maybe next year? Because it seems like if we have this space, it's not going to impact someone, how can we allow us students to move to the schools that is their first choice?
Definitely we can look for that in the student assignment plan.
Director Petto and Director Harris?
I wanted to also to say that congratulations to Hawthorne Elementary School for receiving the John Hopkins Award. And I also want to thank Director Geary for explaining to the public about the situation with the Lawton, with the Lawton property. I think that it's always great to get a free, free space or a free property, but you have to, really have to calculate everything that has to be on it. If you want a school to be successful, we have to really look at what's on it and how do we actually able to provide opportunities if we decide to put a school there? And it takes a lot more than just bringing the building and putting it up. So, we have to look at all the ifs and the whats to make sure that if we decide to put a school there, that it would be very successful and that it's cost-effective. So, I think that if we are looking at that, it's a good way to actually do our homework and be able to look at what is the pluses and the minuses and hopefully that we can be able to move it forward if it's something that's going to really be able to be a plus for the Seattle Public Schools and the students that we serve. And also, I wanted to say that it's, it's always an opportunity when we're looking at pulling up a new school, but also it's a minus when we don't have all the resources and the information in order for us to be able to really look at the site and make sure that it's the right site. And then I like the fact that, you know, talked about, there's no housing in that area and hopefully that it will be a community that will be built up in the future and hopefully that we can be able to look at a school in the near future. But right now, I think that it's something that we actually can look at it and be able to start looking at what are some of the ways that we can be able to look at that as a site for a future site for a school, for Seattle Public Schools. I wanted to also to say that my next community meetings will be, since this month is over, it'll be, next community meeting will be on the 30th of September, and it's at Rock and Tour. And it usually starts at nine o'clock to 11 o'clock in the morning.
Director Harris?
I had a question for Associate Superintendent Herndon, if I could, please. What I heard from Director Pinkham was, if we were to put in some kind of a filter that a waitlist move would not negatively impact another school, could we keep the waitlist open for an additional amount of time? Do you have a sense of, A, how difficult that would be, and B, how many students might be impacted?
I don't know that offhand, but I can certainly take a look at that. It's going to depend on a certain amount of schools. So, I don't have a sense of that right now. I'd have to take a look at that later. But there, obviously, Assistant Superintendent Bergy has some thoughts about that as well.
And I absolutely expected that welcome. Please.
Hello, Joel Lynn Bergy, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance. I can appreciate all the concerns. What I can say is that my staff, they do not have the capacity to do what you're asking in that timeframe. We're the ones who'll have to run all the numbers and we cannot do it. We have start of school where we'll have to be doing the other enrollment projections and coming on top of that, we will simply not be able to manage it. We're working very hard to make sure that our fall staffing adjustments that have to happen, happen more quickly because we've had a lot of families who've been very upset with us making staffing changes too late in the year. And so, that impacts a great number of our families and we're trying to address that issue. We have a plan this year to do that. We're trying to get that done by the third week of September, which is earlier than we have in recent history. And so, that's what we're up against.
Thank you for the input. Director Blanford?
As we started to discuss this, it brought back to my memory, long conversations that we had as a board and staff about changing the waitlist and getting to the place that we are now. And from our educators and from administration, we heard a really strong argument to say that stability of schools is really important and that's why we landed on the date. There was rich discussion about when the date should actually be, but there was a sense, I remember, I think, amongst the board that we were prioritizing stability in schools. And it seems like there's a revisiting of that. And I hope that we will take into consideration the impact, the negative impact that this could potentially have in our schools. When we're trying to start school, we're trying to get to a pretty consistent number of students that we expect and can serve, and then we have staffing considerations that go along with that. And so, all of this to say that I'm making a pretty strong argument, I believe, that we should look at any potential changes that we could make that would not have a negative impact on the stability of schools, but to the extent possible, maintain that stability of schools as a principle that we hold true to.
Okay, I'm going to leap in and I'm also going to conclude the discussion. First of all, thank you, everybody, who came out, especially when it's still sort of summer vacation for some people. It's really always great to hear from the public on these different issues. Thank you to all my colleagues for your thoughtful insights. I'll start off with the waitlist, and I remember what Director Blanford was saying, and I think that conversation about waitlists started a couple of years ago when we first talked about moving it to earlier so planning could be done earlier, so things could be less disruptive. I'm not sure if everybody here was present for that conversation. And what I feel is this instinct to try and have the waitlist open as long as we can so on the possibility that we might be able to not only meet the needs of families, but also use it as a tool to help with capacity challenges we have and perhaps even avoid mitigation funds, having to, you know, mitigate. But it sounds like it's not that easy and that there is a sort of tug-of-war that happens when you move the waitlist. You've got to look at what you leave behind. So, I'm glad we had this conversation. I also believe that if the waitlist can be used as a tool to help, then that's, I'm all for it. But if we're pushing things so far into the beginning of the school year that it's making things disruptive in lots of different ways, I'm concerned about that. So, and then as far as, there was a comment made about HCC not being part of the waitlist calculations. I would like to ask staff to, to speak to that at some point because I didn't know that that was the case. I thought that they, that was part of, I thought everything was part of the whole waitlist conversation. But I understand that Associate Superintendent Herndon is looking into that tomorrow, and so perhaps we can get an update after all of that is taken care of. You know, I'm concerned when we have programs where we say students who qualify for programs are assured that they will get placement. This is their needs after all, it's part of basic education, and then we somehow are not able to accommodate them. And the same goes for all of our special, special ed students. Regarding Fort Lawton, what I would like at this point, and I have asked Superintendent Nyland if this could be possible, is to have some just basic information outlining the pros and cons of the Fort Lawton idea and the pros and cons of the Memorial Stadium idea, just so we have a sense of what we're looking at. Because I think there's been a lot of discussion going on. I don't know that everyone's been a part of the discussion, and it'd be really helpful for the board and probably for the public to have a really clear grasp of what it is we're looking at. As somebody who lives in the Queen Anne Magnolia neighborhood, I have to say, I'm feeling very, very anxious about capacity issues on those two hills. I've lived there now for about 12 years, and it's gotten to the point that when I go to the community pool, I don't recognize anybody. There's lots of new families coming in with lots of kids, and I'm just wondering where are they all going to go? And even with opening Magnolia Elementary, I think that's going to be full almost immediately. I think the expansion to Queen Anne Elementary is also going to be filled, and I do see a real need for capacity in those two neighborhoods. And if Expedia does go ahead and move into its new campus in 2019, I think Magnolia is going to be an obvious place for a lot of, for a lot of Expedia families. So, you know, we've been caught off-guard before as a district in some of our planning, and we have not recovered from having sold off Queen Anne High School. And so, I am very interested in knowing what the pros and cons are with Fort Lawton. Have we turned over every stone? Is there anybody we could tap as an ally who could help us, you know, possibly secure it, if not immediately, you know, for some future use? I would be interested in knowing more about that. And if there's a definitive no to this, I would like to see that very clearly. But right now, I'm not totally clear on all of the, all of the rationales. And then as far as Memorial Stadium, I know that's not a new conversation, and I would love to have more information about what exactly we're looking at in terms of a project, what is feasible, what the costs are and the timeline. And then undergirding all of this, I think it'd be helpful to have some demographic data that shows us what the trends are in our district, in our city, by region, and where the needs are going to be for which kinds of schools. And that will help us further understand what kind of needs we are chasing or predicting. On the topic of C-SIPS, I think some people brought that up. Those are our school improvement plans, our continuous improvement plans for our schools. I just want to say that I do believe they have improved in the last couple of years. I think we have made a point of talking about them and shining some light on them and then telling our principals, you know, what we hope to be in them and what, asking them what help they might need with them and asking our ed directors to step up and help them. So, we're not at a point of perfection, but they are works in progress. Let's see. Want to give a shout-out to all our new principals. It was really energizing and positive to meet all the, all the new people who will be taking control of a lot of our schools. And for me, there's some familiar faces, including one principal who was, who taught one of my sons in first grade. So, it's so wonderful to see people committed to their community and rise up and stay committed to the community in a leadership position. I also want to send out my congratulations and my empathy to all the families who may have been sending their kids off to college in these last few weeks. It's a challenging time and it's a heart-wrenching time to come home afterwards and realize that you're not going to see that kid for six weeks or eight weeks. And so, you've certainly got my empathy on that. Good luck to all our new schools that are opening. I'm very excited about all of them. Please let us know, all of you in these new school communities, if you need anything, if there's any resources that are missing, anything you need, please let the board know and, and we will, we will do our best to make sure that you have everything to start off well. I have a community meeting scheduled for Saturday, September 16th, from 11:00 to 1:00 in the Magnolia Library. As always, everybody's welcome to attend. And a couple of other points, I had the honor of being able to briefly speak at the Summer Leadership Institute and join all so many people who were there. It was an inspiring, informative event, and I want to thank everybody who puts it together. And I hope it'll be the prelude to a really strong year for everyone. I also reached out to principals and said, please let the board know what your needs are. Sometimes I feel like there's a lack of communication between the board and our schools, and I would like to extend an open invitation for better communication. And then Director Geary, I think, brought up a really good point about the student assignment plan. Now is the perfect time for anybody to give us their feedback on the student assignment plan. Any concerns you have, any oversights, any things you want us to take a look at so that we're not looking at it at the last minute? And that way, we can weave it into the plan rather than have to do lots of amendments at the last minute, which are never ideal, but it is a tool that we do have. And I think, I think I've exhausted my little cheat sheet here. All right, so I want to wish everybody a fantastic New Year. And I'm now going to call for a 10-minute recess for the board, and then when we return, we have a relatively short agenda tonight, and then we will have an executive session afterwards. Thank you. Thank you.